Okay, everyone, it's 7:03 and at this time I'm going to call the meeting to order. Just a reminder, this meeting is being recorded and be posted to the township website hopefully sooner than later. Like to welcome everybody to the June 14th, 2021, meeting of the North Country Township Board of Supervisors. My name's Jim Marks. I serve as Chairman of the Board and present this evening on the Zoom meeting are Vice Chairman Rick Schiller, Supervisor Rebecca Elliott, Supervisor Spencer Claypool and Supervisor Harvey Greenwall. Also joining us is our Township Solicitor Dan Sager. And joining us live from the Township Meeting Room is our Township Manager Erica Battler. And we'll explain shortly why she's sitting in the Township Meeting Room. So at this time, you have the minutes from our last meeting. Do I have any comments or questions on the minutes? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 24th, 2021?
So moved.
Okay, Spencer makes a motion. Harvey seconds it all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Counts payable since our last meeting, we have unpaid bills totaling $87,629 and a list of paid bills and payroll totaling $173,367. Do I make questions on the bills from the board? Do I have any comments or questions from the public? These bills were posted to the Township Website over the weekend for public review. If anybody would like to ask a question pertaining to the bills, please unmute yourself, identify yourself and answer your question now. Hearing none, do I have a motion to authorize the paying of $87,629 and acknowledges the paid bills and payroll totaling $173,367?
Ten minutes.
Rebecca makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Rick seconds it all in favor.
Aye.
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 And bills are paid and acknowledged. Developmental bills, do I have any comments on the developers' bills? Okay, hearing none, we're going to move on to our first agenda item, which is to welcome Tricia McCloskey. Tricia is Michael Lane's replacement and Tricia, forgive me, as far as your official title, it wasn't the same as Michael's. Was it Recreation Coordinator?
It's Regional Recreation Planner.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I know it was different than what Mike was. I didn't want to say it wrong. So we welcome you to our meeting. I know you have come to our township and met with Erica. And I believe you also attended one of our planning commission or parks and rec meetings to introduce yourself. So just wanted to welcome you. And I know you wanted to kind of do a little intro of yourself to the board. So I'll turn it over to you.
That's right. I don't really have a presentation. I'm just here to quickly introduce myself to the board again. My name is Tricia McCloskey. I took over for Michael Lane in April. And I will be continuing his good work for the township. I will be working on park and recreation projects. And part of that work will be to seek funding to support township park and recreation projects. And one of the projects I'm working on right now with Erica is to complete a grant source that Erica identified. It is called Healing the Planet and it is actually through Giant Food Company. And they actually provide grants in increments of $5,000, no greater than $25,000. And we are working on an application for a nature-based play area that will be developed in Hanover Meadows Park. So that's what I'm working on right now and just continuing to work on open grants with Erica.
So what was your impression when you toured the township and saw the parks of what we have? What was your impression of what you saw and where do you think that we can most improve?
Well, I've been a Pottstown and Lower Pottsboro resident for 15 years and then I moved away. So I actually am coming to you from Bethlehem tonight. But when I toured your municipality, I was really just very, it was so beautiful. I was like talking to my husband, like, can we move back? Like, it's so pretty. I, I, I'm, you know, I don't want, I don't want to say what, where you could improve just yet. Cause I'm, I think I'm a little too new on the job for that. But I am continuing with projects that Michael started, including things in, I believe Riverfront Park with the boat dock. And I get Riverbend and Riverfront confused. I'll get it one of these days. And just trying to look forward to new opportunities for the township to expand and improve your park facilities. But honestly, you've got some great, unique facilities now and open spaces now. And I just think, you know, if you continue to expand and improve what you've got, you're lucky.
I just want to welcome you and we're grateful for your service. So we look forward to what you may have to offer. So welcome.
Thanks so much.
They have some pretty big shoes to fill. You know, the park, park has been very successful in getting grants and improving our parks. And our parks are, in my opinion, an area that we, we need to improve. So we look forward to the grants that you're able to get us and the suggestions that you have for us. And looking for ways to make our facilities better and more accommodating to, to our residents and the public. Well, very good. Well, Tricia, thank you very much. We appreciate you stopping in our meeting. You're welcome to stay if you like. And we're not offended if you, if you have something to do and need to leave, that, that's perfectly fine. We certainly look forward to working with you and seeing, you know, what kind of partnership we can have going forward.
Thanks for coming.
Next agenda item, we do have no subdivision or land development tonight. We do have something under old business. COVID-19 protocols, as I opened this meeting, I told you that Erica is joining us for the meeting from the meeting room. And that is because last week, I believe it was Thursday or Wednesday, the state legislature lifted the emergency declaration. It was terminated. And that declaration gave us the ability to hold these meetings virtually. So one of the caveats to, to that is if the public meeting room was held open and somebody was there, then we somewhat qualify for, for holding this meeting virtually. And since it was such a last minute, I believe Friday, we were scrambling, trying to figure this out. Erica was on the phone with PSATs and, and the manager, you know, consortium to see what people were doing and what the suggestions were. We talked to our solicitor. And so the best answer that we can come up with at the end of the day on Friday was to have Erica in our, in our meeting room to kind of meet that qualification. So it puts us at a point now where we need to have the discussion about how we, these meetings are going to be held going forward. And Erica, I'm going to ask you to kind of bring everyone up to date as far as your research and due diligence in looking into the options for hybrid.
Sure. And that's a good summation of the last, last week of a lot of information, you know, changing, you know, that's been the theme. But we're here and doing the best we can to accommodate, you know, given the situation. So to date, there are townships that are converting to a hybrid option. But it is taking investment in technology. And again, when I say that, you know, it's looking apples to apples, you know, when we talk about some larger municipalities that have larger meeting rooms or, you know, a setup additional staff that can help support the technological piece of this. That all has to come into play in considering the hybrid option. So with municipalities similar to us, the few that are going to hybrid are still working this out. The feedback is that you need to take a lot of time and start slowly with a few important board meetings. But again, it does take an investment of the equipment. Looking at that, the, the cleanest option would be an option where you have essentially a camera system with a laptop that gets set up and audio microphones that are set up for, let's just say, the board in order to speak and to be seen on a, let's say, a Zoom platform. The estimates that I've received, that costs about $7,500 to do that. So we have an information, again, I am getting feedback from the municipalities similar to us in size and scope. It is a bit clunky in terms of trying to manage it with a smaller staff and a, you know, within the resources and means that we have right now. So I actually have a meeting with all municipalities tomorrow morning. We're going to, you know, get our heads around, you know, what's transpiring with the end of this declaration. We'll get, I'll get some real feedback on the municipalities that are, that have just started with their board meetings using the hybrid option. A lot of, a lot of them started with committees. And I can report back on that, but that's, it will certainly take a financial investment to do so. Dedicate the resources to do it, do that and work through that type of option.
So what's, what's the feeling of the board of what we're going to do going forward?
I think we start out with in-person meetings and see what the feedback is from some of the other townships at the cost and, and how much it takes in order to set it up and maintain it.
I think we've had greater community participation through the Zoom meetings. So if we can somehow incorporate that as well, I think we can get more community involvement.
I agree with Rick.
So Spencer, you're saying going back to in-person and kind of seeing what happens?
Yes.
Harz. I'd rather use the hybrid for a while. If we can, like we're doing tonight. What's the, what's the time limit on that? Does any, is there one? Does anybody know?
There's no time limit on the way you're doing it right now. With, but you have to have somebody, you have to have an open built, a public building. That's all you, you do not need to have a quorum in the public building. It's just the way, way it is, but you do have to have an open building and public can't come in. And somebody would obviously have to do the Zoom.
Just so it's clear, I'm not opposed to the hybrid. But as Erica was saying, it's going to take some time to sort it all out and to see what fits the best, you know, for the township. And that's why I'm just saying, I suggest seeing how some of the other townships are handling it. You know, maybe we can, you know, pick up some hints and ideas off the others.
Well, that, what I'm proposing is we stick with the way we're doing it tonight until we get more input from the other class twos, not the larger townships with more resources. Staff is, is the issue with going full hybrid, as Eric, as I understand it. But I think we got at least another couple of meetings that we can hobble through this way until we get more information to make our decision.
And I agree with that.
Okay. All right. But I think we have a consensus that will let Erica do her due diligence to come up with some kind of proposal for a hybrid plan. And we'll see what it costs, what's involved, how we manage it. And hopefully maybe we can even find an example of a similar municipality, similar size who's done it, that we can view what their, you know, what their meeting looks like online and see, you know, see what the, if it, if it comes through, if there's a benefit to it. I mean, some of the, the issues I see is if we go, if, if we go to a hybrid, at some point, the board is going to go back to the building. I mean, I was at a baseball game today, sitting shoulder to shoulder with strangers. So I'm certainly comfortable to sit around my friends. So I'm ready to go back to the, to the room. So I see us being there. What, and I, and while I like the hybrid option, what I'm finding challenging to comprehend is what if we have a member of the public who's on that hybrid and somehow wants to communicate, is that, are they going to be able to do that successfully? Can we hear them? Can they hear us? What's going to be involved? Are we going to spend the whole night trying to figure out how to mute and unmute somebody? There's a lot of open questions here. But I guess let's see what Erica comes up with. Let's see what the cost is. Let's see if we can get an example of what somebody else is doing. Let's try to find out if they've had success with it or what their challenges are for, for doing it. And then really weigh the, weigh the benefits for the cost. And $7,500 is not cheap. And if we use it for, you know, two months and it's not working for us and we just spent $7,500. You know, I don't think any of us want to do that. So for right now, let's, let's see what we come back with. We'll plan for the meeting on the 28th to be similar to this. And we'll, we'll, we'll see what we, that discussion has. So are we good with that?
Yes.
Yeah.
I just wanted to mention too, we have a number of committees that we need to guide as well, if they can continue to follow this type of process or something different.
Well, that's, so Dan, that was the legal question there. They can't do Zoom meetings, right? Just completely, so. And you know, take it a step farther. Is, are we going to have the committees meeting in person and yet the board's not going to come back to the room? What's, what's, how's that look? If we can't do them in a hybrid type thing, because our staff's going to have to be there to, to manage the equipment. Nobody is going to be able to, to manage the equipment.
I wouldn't have anybody on the historical commission that could fill in.
Right. So those meetings are going to have to be in person.
Yes.
Are we good having all of our committees meet in person, but the board doesn't want to come back in person? I don't have the answer to that.
Well, I'm in favor of waiting for another meeting to see what we can find out from other township.
I am too. So, I mean, there's a lot of questions there. Let's see what we can do about getting some answers. So, but here's, here's the issue. Okay, so tonight is June 14th. Planning Commission has a meeting. I'm assuming that it's still on for Wednesday night. Technically, that was, and they do, Corey, I believe Corey Trago is giving a presentation.
Right.
Technically, that meeting, it can't legally, it called a planning commission meeting. I guess it can be a Zoom webinar type thing. I'd like Dan weigh in on that. EAC has a meeting next week, next Monday. Open Space has one next Tuesday. How are we handling notice before we know what we're doing on the 28th?
Oh, I can speak for Open Space. There was some discussion on it the last meeting about why we were not meeting in, in a public. I think, and I'm going to take a stab that the majority would rather be in person.
That, as it stands right now, those meetings can't legally happen as scheduled.
Right.
Hey Jim.
My thought is still we go back to a public meeting.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to going back to a public meeting. I think it's normalizing. My point was just that there was more community participation through Zoom. So if we go back in the in-person meetings, that, that's fine, but I think that our attendance of the community might drop off some. I could be wrong, but I'm amenable to going back in person as well, whatever we decide.
I agree with you. I wish we could figure this, I wish there was an easy way to do this, that we can do it both ways. I'm just, from what I'm hearing, I don't know that that's going to be an easy task to achieve.
Has anybody queried the chairman of all the committees to find out if, what their groups are in favor of? Do we have that data?
Well, we have a sense of what Open Space is.
Historically, it wants to be in person.
Yeah. And Bill, I'll let you jump in here. Maybe you can speak for the planning commission.
Well, I've not had a straw poll with them yet, but I was talking to Scott France, the executive director for the Montgomery County Plan Group on a different matter earlier today. And asked him what their direction was going to be for the PMRPC. And, and this may be a Dan Sager question, but he said that the election results, first of all, have not been certified. And I don't know if that's factual or not, but so there's no mandate to go back from his perspective to in-person meetings. I would be.
That's true. You're right.
Okay. And I, I mean, I, from a planning commission perspective, I'd be in favor of going back to in-person meetings, just to get back to normal.
I think we have John Worth on here too. John, are you, are you here?
Actually, it's Patty. John's not here tonight.
Okay.
Sorry to disappoint.
What's your feeling from Parks and Rec?
We didn't discuss it at the last meeting, unfortunately. So I, I really can't. I can't speak for everybody. I mean, personally, I, I actually like this way. I prefer this way, but I understand the, the complications.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So I mean, Bill, you're right. I read that same thing about the, the elections being certified and it didn't actually kick into place. So they, I think that'll probably cover us for these upcoming meetings and give us that two-week pick time period to do a little bit more of our due diligence again. And we'll revisit this on the 28th.
Sounds good.
So we are going to move on to new business, storm water management projects. For this, I'm going to turn this over to Erica. She's going to bring us up to date on storm water management.
All right. Thank you. So unfortunately, the township did not receive the DCD watershed restoration grant. We had applied for about $240,000 to take care of Fickle Run and Kennelworth Creek Shorewater Projects as part of our MS4 program. So with that, we still have time marching on in our permit cycle to, you know, remain vigilant about. And we have budgeted for the local match that was necessary for that grant for engineering and design. And also some, just the MS4 program in and of itself for 2021. We, we looked at, you know, the, how favorable our application would be. And, you know, we do not have survey data. We don't have a truly shovel-ready series of projects. We're really looking at, you know, putting a competitive proposal forward. But we know that that just makes a stronger proposal. So there, there are certainly other grants available and funding sources, even potentially the upcoming COVID relief money that is set to be distributed to municipalities. With that said, we feel that with the time right now and DEP, DEP permits that take, you know, months to obtain in the construction cycle with seasons, that we should proceed with LTL consultants with the, with the budget to begin the design and engineering on both projects, which are stream bank restoration projects. And this will help us to reduce our sediment load as part of our M4 requirement and BMP projects. These projects, when we were looking at the grant proposal, we did talk with the committees about this. And, you know, it was definitely supported as it comes from a, you know, environmental floodplain mitigation type projects where we're restoring some much-needed stream bank restoration. So with that said, the total project cost remains the same as far as the Kennelworth and Bickle Run locations. And so that we would be looking at $282,000. But what I'm asking for this evening is to continue to look at funding opportunities for the construction while we can initiate the engineering and design in the permit coordination. And we had, that would be not to exceed $28,000. And again, I, we did budget for this year to get that started. I don't think we'll be expending to that degree to $28,000 by the December 31, 2021, probably carry forward. So we'll be, you know, before we know it, we'll be in the budget process again. So we are watching that. But to get started on those items, we feel we'll be prudent at this point.
Any comments or questions from the board?
I do think it would be a good time to get started on the engineering and the permitting, because it does take so long. We see that with the doc and how long it's taken to get permits.
Right.
And with my knowledge, some of this relief money may cover the actual cost. I think this would be a good time to move forward and have it ready for, you know, if it gets agreed upon that we can use the money, then we can actually get into the actual work. So I'm all for it.
I think we should move ahead.
Thank you, Spence. All right. So I am looking for a motion to authorize LTL consultants to proceed with design and engineering activities associated with Kennelworth and Bickle Run Park for a cost not to exceed $28,000.
I'll move.
Second.
Rick makes a motion. Harvey seconds it all in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Erica, that's what you needed? Just that motion and any other?
That's it. We'll get going. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we'll move on to administration. We're going to start with the police chief. You sent your report out before I go to you. Let me see if this, the chief sent the report out last week. Does anybody have any comments or questions on the report that was sent out? Okay, chief, anything you want to report from the, on behalf of the police department?
Uh, yeah, just a few things, but I just wanted to make sure. I think it was, Rick, you had mentioned to have a, that part in the monthly report regarding Detective Proudly's involvement with ICAC and, and he didn't have any hours this past month there. But in the monthly report, you'll see where it is, it's going to be located there at the end of his assignments. So next month, you'll, you'll see a few hours where he's been in training and things like that. So just wanted to make sure that you saw that. First though, I'd like to congratulate a couple of officers for going through a certification towards a master patrol officer over the past couple of months. Officer Vic Machies, he did reach a certification of master police officer. And, and he's, he's gotten that. And then Officer Igor Parfenuk and Officer Victoria Hippel reached the certification level of a level three police officer. So just congratulations to them and, and the work that they've done to get that certification. Last Tuesday, we had our Cops and Cones night down at the ice cream parlor. Turned out to be a very nice night, a little warm, but it wasn't raining. So that was a, that was a great night. Like to just again, extend the thanks to the ice cream parlor for allowing us to use their facility for that event. I believe there was 100 ice cream cones handed out to a kid. So we had at least 100 kids walking around with, with ice cream that night, if not more. But it was, it was a good showing and a lot of people were, were excited to be out and being in public again. So that, that was, that was a real good night. Also, just following up on the, the one grant that we applied for, we did get approval for that grant towards the body worn cameras and in-car camera for the vehicle upgrade. And we've received that funding and within the next few weeks, I hope to be placing that order for the, that, that new equipment. As soon as like I hear back from the salesman as far as the next step to take for that. We also finally got our new car back in service. We were waiting for parts to come in. Again, we were told it was being delayed because of the issue of COVID. So finally, the, the car is back. It needs to go in to get some decals put on, but it is up and running and in service. So that's, that's a good thing for us. And, and then in the next couple of weeks, we do have the, the Norco Fair coming in. So we're looking into what needs to be done for that. what needs to be done for that. And that's all I have.
Um, just a, just a fun backtrack on the cops and cones. The cops and cones event was terrific. It, it, it was great to see everybody. It was really the first time in, in sixteen months, fifteen months that we've had a chance to be in person together and socialize. And it was great to see the officers who came out for it. It was great to see Paul allow himself to be attacked by the, by the dog. And for Pete to put on the demonstration for the dog, I think that, that went over really well. The feedback on Facebook was, was fantastic. The photo of everybody, of all the officers and Ann together, I think was really good. Just a great community event. So nice to be somewhat back to normal and feeling comfortable with people around us again. So really good job, chief. Real good.
Thank you. Yeah, I think the biggest hit for the kids was the large SWAT truck. That was a, that was the hit of the night, I think.
Yes, it was. Yeah. Okay, road report went out last week. Does anybody have any comments on the road report or any questions for John? John, do you have anything you want to, to share with the board?
No, our, just our contractor for Temple Road Project is looking to begin the end of June, beginning of July. So we're anxiously waiting on it.
Okay, manager report, Erica.
Thank you. We had about a week and a half ago, received a notice from D C E D. And that was to submit an application for the COVID relief funds within, it really was the next five days of receiving that email. Upon receiving that, we got our ducks in a row. We got, you know, the paperwork that was necessary. Thank goodness, we have registration numbers and things on hand to get that going. But D C E D was trying to emphasize, we are, once we receive the funds from the federal government, we're under a time clock to disperse those funds. So it was really putting the organization to how those funds are going to be, you know, deposited and administered. So we had, we have filed through D C E D for the township portion or allocation rather, for COVID relief funding. It has been adjusted to a total of eight hundred and thirty-three thousand sixty-two dollars. By the end of this month, we are anticipated to receive fifty percent of that amount at four hundred and sixteen thousand five hundred and thirty-one dollars. And the guidance we are receiving right now is to certainly deposit, deposit that into first, a general fund checking account. That's the account that's already set up with D C E D. And then we'll work on segregating that money into a separate account. And look at reviewing all the guidance that goes into the accounting for that, that program. So we'll actually have program details and treat this like a grant through D C E D. And then, you know, I, I've spoken about this before. There's guidance on the different areas that the funds can be spent towards. So there the P sets and everything that, you know, the training and webinars that they're continuing to roll out. They're getting a lot of questions answered. And right now, without official guidance, they're, they're saying, you know, there's no, there's no race. We have until twenty-twenty-four to think thoroughly through the management and use of that money. And then as far as the status on the bond reissue with the authority, we're still working through that process. There's a lot of data that is collected and information put into what's called a preliminary official statement. And that is used to rate the township in, in terms of the standards and pores calculations that go into that. And we're working with the authority on that information. On June twenty-eighth, at that board meeting, we will have an update and the authority will provide a little bit more guidance on some of the questions that were raised at the previous meeting as well as look at the draft ordinance. That'll be advertised for that bond refinance and reissue. As far as Fernbrook Lodge, we, staff and members of the board, a few members were present to check out the ongoing progress with Dick Franz, the architect who's leading that project and talk about the scope of work that is, is in progress and the design and specifications underway for the fit out of Fernbrook Lodge. We are seeking the services of Tom Ziegler to confirm some work that was done structurally to the lodge. And also in terms of the Swineheart Pavilion, as that is closed right now due to a structural assessment report that was completed. And there are some, there's some definite issues there that we need to evaluate the cost for, for repair, comprehensive repair and possible, you know, options, what to do with that. So we'll continue with that project. And then lastly, I am moving forward with strategic planning for the staff. Department heads have met over several months and talked about some goals and objectives to achieve internally. You know, we, we finally hopefully can do less reacting to the environment around us and start being proactive and, you know, with great staff and a lot of good ideas to keep things moving forward. So looking forward to that. Cannot believe it's already six months into the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. Solicitor, Dan.
Yes. Earlier this evening, I reached out to the attorney for American Heritage Credit Union. As you recall, they were, they applied for a variance to put a bank on the Coventry Mall. And we had not heard from them. I was wondering where they were since the deadline for hearing has to take place by next month. I just got an email from them. They still want to pursue it. However, they want to know what the township's position is and if the township is going to object to it. We would have to schedule a date and the date may be before the July meeting, depending upon. I don't remember exactly when it is. Maybe Erica knows exactly the timeframe. I think it's July nineteenth. So it could be within that timeframe that we would have to come to a decision as to whether you want to intervene in the, the hearing or not.
Now, I personally don't want to chase them away. I think there'd be a good a good addition to the township and my, my gut feeling is to let the, the hearing take place and, and the hearing be what it is.
I think I, I would concur with, with Rick as well.
I, you got that?
All right.
I agree with you.
Okay.
I agree as well.
Okay, so the township's not going to take a position and seek to intervene.
Correct.
Okay. The Tripodi, we're still, it's, I think we're, we're waiting for the decision. It's now not, there's no argument on this. But with that, I think that's, that's where we are at this point. So nothing further.
I just want to ask the solicitor about the model ordinance for timber harvesting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Thank you, Spencer. I appreciate that. I found a model and I've given it to Erica for her to review as well. Brandywine Trust has a really nice model that incorporates not just the timber part of it, but the, what, what I think the township is looking for as well, the other aspects of it, the environmental and the agriculture. And I think it's a good template for the ordinance. I think at this point, I, I, I do encourage I would, you do need to move this a little bit along. I know this takes forever while the other side of it, but I do think you need to at least respond within the next month or so as to what you want to propose. The Penn State model only deals with timber, frankly. So I, I think this is actually a better one. It is approved by the Penn State University as part of their model timber ordinances. So I, that's how I got it frankly from it.
Well, maybe it could be the agenda for the next, next meeting.
Erica, we'll add this to the next meeting.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Sorry about that. Supervisors report. Rebecca, start with you.
I don't have any report per se, but noticing the weeds are growing up around the roadways. And I was wondering if Penn Dot can come out, for instance, at Nyman Road and South Hanover Street. If you make a left-hand turn there, you have to come out a little ways to get beyond the weeds to see the traffic. So there's that. And also Hanover Street, South Hanover Street is really messed up. I'm wondering if Penn Dot has a plan to repave that road. So it's just the roads and the weeds. That's all that I'm concerned with at this point. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, I'll take care of that. Thank you, Rebecca.
Rick, anything from you?
Oh, nothing from me. Thank you.
Okay, Harvey.
Yeah, I, I just want to compliment the road crew on their cleanup after the storms. And also cones for cops or what, that was, that was impressive.
All right. Thank you, Harvey. Spencer, anything from you?
I just wanted to mention that today is an historic day. I want to wish everybody a happy Flag Day.
All right, public comment portion of the meeting that the public has to comment. If you have a comment at this time, I ask that you unmute yourself. Identify yourself and make your comment now.
Hi Jim, it's Patty Worth.
Hi Patty.
I, I was thrilled to see the success of the, the cones and cops. And I also wanted to point out that the township hosted another community event on Friday, June fourth, which was extremely successful. Also, we were hoping to get around fifty people and we probably had about three times that when all was said and done. There were well over a hundred people there and the feedback has been similarly overwhelmingly positive with lots and lots of requests for more events like that. It was just, I, I really wish that more people from the township could have been there, the committees and commissions, because to see that many people out in the park after dark, enjoying it, families, older people, we even had a disabled dog there. It was just, it was really a wonderfully, wonderfully successful night.
Yeah, Patty, it's all the, all the photos we posted up on Facebook and a lot of comments and a lot of positive comments on, on Facebook. So yeah, we're really, and a lot of comments stating that they do want to see more of those type of events. So really good job. Thank you for, for putting it together and, and promoting it and, and really good job. Any other public comment? All right, hearing none. So I just want to thank everybody for, for joining us. We are back here in some form or fashion, two weeks from tonight on June twenty-eighth, twenty-three people at the height of our meeting. Want to thank everybody for, for taking the time this evening to join us here and look forward again to being back in person at some point. But thank you again. And without objection, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. So good night, everybody.
Thank you.